The time now is 7:00 PM. I will now call this meeting to order. At this time, I ask everyone to please silence your cell phones and any other electronic Your greeters tonight at the door is Planning Director Steven Spraker and Utilities Manager Bob Priest. Introductions, starting from my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Elizabeth Walden, City Clerk Susan Daughtry, Deputy Mayor, Zone One Commissioner Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
And directly to my left and your right, we have Zone Three Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Good evening, everyone.
Zone Four Commissioner Harold Riley.
Good evening, everyone, welcome.
City Manager Joy Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Sean Finley, Deputy City Attorney Anne Margaret Emery, and to my far left and your far right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey, Fire Chief Howard Bailey, and I'm Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, I'd like to call up Reverend Dr. Emmanuel Swift of Historic New Bethel Aim Church for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Eternal and almighty God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, thankful for the gift of life, community, and the opportunity to serve. We ask your presence to guide this city commission, grant them wisdom to make just decisions, courage to do what is right, and compassion for all who call this city home. Bless every resident, worker, and visitor of this community. May our actions tonight reflect integrity, unity, and a shared vision for a city that values fairness, safety, and prosperity for all. Help us to listen with respect, speak with kindness, and work together in a spirit of peace and purpose. We ask these blessings in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Reverend, for coming. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to presentations and proclamations. At this time, I'd like to call up the representatives to receive their proclamation for Manufacturing Month.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you. Good to see you. Yes. Okay, pleasure.
advancing technical education, and fostering a culture of craftsmanship in Ormond Beach. And whereas October is recognized as Manufacturing Month, a time to celebrate the achievements of U.S. manufacturers and highlight their vital role in driving innovation, economic growth, and global competitiveness. And whereas the month began with "We Make It Here," day hosted by Volusia Manufacturers Association, VMA, where regional manufacturers visit local schools to share their stories, showcase their products, and inspire students to explore high-skill, high-wage careers in modern manufacturing, setting the tone for a month of education, engagement, and pride. And whereas through collaboration with schools, colleges, workforce programs, manufacturers are investing in the future by bridging the skills gap and empowering the next generation of innovators to carry forward the legacy of American manufacturing excellence. And whereas the VMA events throughout Manufacturing Month aim to challenge stereotypes and present manufacturing as a dynamic and innovative field. And whereas on October 11th, 2025, the VMA will present the Sixth Annual Robot Brawl at Embry-Riddle's ICI Center, a collaboration of students and manufacturers building robots together to compete in a battle for supremacy. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2025, as a day to celebrate Manufacturing Month.
Next, could I have the representatives to come up and receive the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in intimate or familiar relationships wherein one individual seeks to exert power and control over another through physical harm, emotional manipulation, psychological intimidation, or economic deprivation. And whereas domestic violence shatters the foundation of safety and trust within households, replacing love and respect with fear and instability, devastating relationships, and transforming homes meant to be sanctuaries into dangerous environments, leaving individuals trapped in unsafe situations. And whereas in the United States, domestic violence is a pervasive human rights violation affecting more than 10 million people annually, equating to approximately 24 individuals every minute who experience this injustice. And whereas a significant number of cases go unreported, particularly among male survivors, which studies estimating over 60% of the men who experience this violence do not report their abuse due to stigma, fear, or lack of support. And whereas the Domestic Abuse Council of Volusia County and the Ormond Beach Police Department are committed to offering services and advocacy to prevent violence and promote healthy relationships. And whereas this year's theme is "With Survivors Always," emphasizing partnership with survivors to ensure they have safety, support, and solidarity through their experiences, and acknowledges communities must continually show up for them. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, last but not least, can we have the representatives come up to receive the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week? Did you want to say anything to anyone before we give the proclamation about Fire Prevention Week?
Good evening. My name is Ken Gaines, Fire Marshal with the City of Ormond Beach. As you can imagine, fire prevention is not just a week-long event. It's actually something you should be thinking about regularly. Smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors are certainly kind of the front line of being able to help you survive an incident that may happen primarily in your home. So it's just not something that we would want to think about for commercial purposes, but more for residential. So please make sure that you have a plan of action so that you can get yourself and your loved ones, along with your animals, out of your residence and into a safe spot. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I'll be holding the proclamation, and I will read it.
Whereas the City of Ormond Beach Fire Department is dedicated to protecting lives and property through fire prevention, public education, and rapid emergency response, in partnership with the National Protection Association, NFPA, the official sponsor of Fire Prevention Week for over a century. And whereas Fire Prevention Week 2025, observed October 5th, 11, promotes the theme "Charge Into Fire Safety." Lithium-ion batteries in your home emphasize the importance of properly buying, charging, and disposing lithium-ion batteries. And whereas lithium-ion batteries power many of the devices we use daily, such as smartphones, laptops, e-bikes, power tools, toys, and more. When damaged, misused, or improperly charged, these batteries can overheat, ignite, or even explode. And whereas the NFPA urges consumers to take three essential safety steps: buy only certified products that meet safety standards, charge devices according to manufacturer instructions on hard surface and with approved chargers, and dispose of batteries responsibly at a battery recycling center, never in household trash. And whereas Fire Prevention Week serves as a valuable reminder on how everyday choices can reduce risks, safeguard homes, and protect loved ones. And whereas we also honor the bravery and commitment of firefighters, emergency personnel, and public safety professionals who work tirelessly to keep our community safe, and we remember those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 5th through October 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Now it's back to business. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, or any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given a total of three minutes. Okay, so it's important, you get three minutes. We don't want anybody to go over, but you know, you don't have to use the whole three minutes either, so keep that in mind as well. So if you want to get up and say a couple things and you walk away, that's also okay. So my first speaker I have tonight is David Siegel. And one last thing, too, is make sure you please state your name clearly for the record and your address. Thank you.
I've done this in Orange County, so they got me well-trained. Your place looks better than there. Anyway, yes, thank you for--my name is David Siegel. My joke over there in Orlando is I'm not the timeshare king. But anyway, I live at 928 Buena Vista Avenue. I've lived here forever, and I'm 67, and I've never had cause to come before you with anything, and this is not a complaint, just information tonight. So I want to talk just about a kind of permitting, and maybe that process, just to simplify. We had a contract to put a roof on our house. The contractor said, oh, we'll handle the permit. I'm making this as short as possible because details really can bother you all. And essentially, the permit, the contractor didn't--it was for two things, put the roof on and the soffits around the house. And the contractor was kind of tidal. He'd come and go, took the roof off, you know, it rained like crazy, and then had to drill holes in the garage so the water would--it's just one of those customer complaints. But then your inspectors came in, and when they completed the roof, walked around, and to our displeasure, the people had left these screw things, and your person stepped right on one of them and said, "Tell these people to clean up, explicative this mess." At any rate, but we kept asking, well, what about the soffits? They haven't done those yet. And then after this conversation went back and forth, he was like, "It's not on the permit." And we made a big deal about it with the contractor. He did three quarters of the soffits and then stopped. And so I've had a few conversations with permitting and zoning, and they would come back and say, "Well, it wasn't on the permit." And I talked to one young lady, and I said, "Well, I would think"--I've lived here all my life, and you do not mess with Ormond Beach and permits. And I said, "So you have work that was done without a permit? And so wouldn't you want to kind of take a look at, you know, measure that contractor?" We started looking up some other things in the contractor, and, well, he didn't have a good reputation out there. At any rate, we still have like 20 feet that's not done, but--and by the way, the tarp and a bunch of the things, those big, long nail things that your poor inspector stepped on are still in the yard. So they didn't clean up their mess, and my only point to the permitting was if you get complaints about people like this, I mean, they didn't finish one job, I don't know why they would be--should be asking you all for permission to do others. And I'll give you 10 seconds back, that's all I wanted to say. But your people were absolute professionals.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Annie Saudi.
I'm going to put this up here. Can I put it right here?
You can put it in front of the podium if you want, or leave it right there if you like. That's fine.
Bring it down to me. Hi, my name is Annie, and I am a proud resident of Ormond and a parent advocating for my Down Syndrome son Lance, as well as the special needs here seated and all of in our community. As you observe the signs, posters, and cards in your hand, you will see several pictures of Lance working in my inclusive special needs exercise class we both did at the Nova Rec Center. The Daytona News-Journal printed a front-page story November 17th. The article stated that I assisted Mayor Bill Partington in launching a pilot program to help the special needs find employment within the City of Ormond. The Mayor Bill Partington quoted, "They would just come in for a couple hours and they would be paid for. The goal is to be able to provide them a better opportunity to be employed and also to normalize their existence in society. Please let's honor Bill Partington's last good deed as mayor that he wanted to do in the City of Ormond. My son Lance was a successful example of the pilot program. He worked the same two hours a day, two days a week, from October 23 to November 24, when I was told then, due to the pilot program, he could no longer work. It was an abrupt decision made by the City Manager Joyce Shanahan, without notice or reason to Lance or to me. Lance proudly worked flawlessly. He never had an incident during this time of volunteer employment, which was a turn into paid employment after the pilot program was fully implemented. To this day, he does not understand why his dream job got taken from him and has an emotional breakdown whenever at Nova Rec or even gets near it. Joyce rudely denied my request twice to rehire Lance. At the same time, the City Manager immediately canceled my inclusive special needs exercise class I did voluntarily for over three years. I was devastated and heartbroken for Lance and 30 special needs kids that waited for me eagerly, and the volunteers here in the room also lost their joy, and especially the loss of the pilot program that would have benefited our special needs community. Joyce rudely denied my request twice to hire Lance again, and I consider this act a despicable act against humanity." Okay, so clearly, the heartless actions and decisions need to be corrected as soon as possible. This definitely does not match the image of our beautiful city of Ormond Beach. I ask that the City Manager's unfair decision to be reversed and made right today by vote for my son to have his job back and for all the special needs in our community to be treated equally as the citizens they are, and also to reconsider reinstating this pilot program and the exercise class. They deserve it, we deserve it, and thank you for letting me speak.
And just on deck, we have Valerie Stella.
Jennifer Bright, Ormond Beach. Good evening. It has come to my attention that within Ormond Beach, we have a special group of young people whose quality of life is in jeopardy. And our city has the opportunity to help these folks learn job skills so they can build self-confidence and be more productive members of society. When Representative Bill Partington was mayor, he stated that he would start the pilot program to do just that, but when he left, the program was axed. Now, I don't wish to increase spending, but to reallocate funds that are already in the budget. For example, the state of the city last year was held at the Oceanside Golf and Country Club, and the city spent over $11,000. I guess my invite was lost in the mail on that one. Last year, the City Commission spent $49,000 on training and education, which included workshops, conferences, galas, travel, hotels, and food. And fiscal year 2026, the budget is for $58,000. And the City Manager Department, which is six people, spent over $38,000 in training and education, which also includes workshops, conferences, travel, hotels, and food. This department ran $18,000 over budget on this line item. To start, the city can scale back these expenses to stay on budget and restart the pilot program to help these young folks learn job skills. Thank you.
Okay, and on deck, we have John Stella.
Hello, my name is Valerie Stella, 1525 Oak Forest Drive, Ormond Beach, Florida. I thank you, Mayor Leslie, and the Commissioners for your time. I volunteered--oh, I'm a proud and grateful and active Ormond Beach resident, and I'm here to ask you to consider making a decision in favor of our special needs community and Lance. I volunteered for Annie and her special needs class at Nova Rec. This is a wonderful class and very inclusive, and it was an inclusive experience for all of us. Before the class was canceled, we had made strides. We were on the verge of connecting more and more community volunteers to help with the program, including retired physicians and professionals from our area and Father Lopez High School students with an exercise buddy when the program was halted. The program gives people like me access to understanding people with disabilities and an opportunity to serve and connect in a meaningful way. Special connections with this group were forged and relationships established. It's heart-wrenching to know that when this program ended, Lance also lost his dream job. Lance was capable in his position and well-liked. I kindly ask that you open your hearts and vote tonight to allow Lance to have his volunteer job back and to consider reinstating the inclusive exercise class that allows connections and friendships to be a part of our community and the community of those who have disabilities. In addition, please consider the pilot work program that will benefit our special needs residents and show a community effort to create the inclusion that they deserve. Thank you.
Okay, John. Okay, and on deck, we have Colleen McManon.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Stella. I'm the son of Valerie Stella, and I'm a junior at Father Lopez High School. I am also a friend of Lance. I am here to support Lance. I hope you all will consider including him in our community and re-establishing the special needs exercise class. I thank you, Mayor Leslie, and everybody else for your time and your service to our amazing town, and I humbly ask that you will vote for Lance to get his volunteer job back at the Rec Center. As captain of my cross-country team at Father Lopez, I know how important it is to have the self-esteem from doing something that makes me feel proud. I hope that you will vote to give that feeling back to Lance and all the special needs kids in our community. Thank you very much.
Colleen, and on deck, we have Jonah Grasso.
Good evening, everybody. Colleen McMan, Carrollwood Circle. We're here to talk about fiscal responsibility and making our communities stronger. I'm not asking for a bigger budget. Taxpayers work hard enough, so we already pay our enough in taxes. Instead, we need to reallocate funds to focus on what matters most, and that is our residents. Take leisure services for example. I don't know why, but at River Grill, the holiday luncheon cost us taxpayers $857. That's a luxury they don't need. They don't need lunch for $857. $51,000 for an outside vendor to pressure wash. Why? Don't we have people? The truest credit card for leisure services is up 113% since 2022, and the leisure services payroll has jumped 40,000, 38% in three years. What is going on? Enough is enough. Most importantly, we must redirect these savings to a new volunteer program here in the community. This program will empower our special needs community, fostering inclusion and not exclusion. It's about giving them a chance to contribute, to grow, to thrive in our community. I am blessed to attend a workout on Friday afternoons. It's one of the highlights of my week. 3 o'clock Uno starts, and at 4:00 p.m. the workout starts. Avery is here tonight, and she is amazing. She is leg pressing 210 pounds. She is going to Advent Health because she's deciding whether she wants to be a pediatric nurse or a radiology tech, so she's job observing to decide what she's going to do. Lance is amazing. Lance is the kindest, sweetest young man who helps and assists everybody in that gym. Anybody that needs help, Lance is right there. Ibi, thank goodness. Ibi's birthday was on Friday. We had a celebration for Ibi. It was wonderful, as we do modified leg presses and modified arm curls. Leah, strong Leah. There you are, Leah. Leah is so amazing, and she loves to play cards, and she's very good at it, but she really does like when her brother comes over to cook for her because she likes hamburgers, french fries, and lemonade. Let's freeze wasteful spending. Commissioners, Mayor Leslie, City Manager, it is time to audit a bloated budget. We need to shift funds where they count. Together, we can build a more inclusive future. Stop saying they're not included in our community because they very much are. We want the program back. We want the pilot program back, and we want the exercises back for Annie. Mayor and City Commissioners, we are looking for you to all do the right thing. Inclusion, not exclusion, of these young adult residents. Thank you.
Okay, we have Joanna, and on deck, we have Keeden Smith.
My name is Joanna Grasso. I'm a retired Volusia County Special Education teacher, and I have a very special, special needs grandson with Down Syndrome. I'm here tonight-- tonight. I was a volunteer for three years with Annie's exercise class at the rec center. Every Wednesday, I would be greeted by these smiles and hugs that sometimes just took the breath out of me. These special adults needed exercise class. The music was blaring. Zack in a wheelchair had his music pumped up. Lance always helped get the mats and the balls and anything else that he needed to do. Lance also had another job, but it was canceled. Why? Why was it taken away? I keep asking. Why was Lance's job taken away? Why was the exercise program taken away? Why was the pilot program taken away that provided job training and life skills to our special needs community taken away? This is a volunteer program. It didn't cost the taxpayers any money. Operative word here, volunteer. What it did cost was Lance's And his self-esteem. I'm here tonight to reinstate Lance's job and future jobs for our special needs community, kids, adults. I'm here to reinstate a pilot program. So his peers also have an opportunity for jobs. I'm here to reinstate Annie's volunteer, volunteer, exercise program that aided in the physical, mental, and spiritual of these special people, kids. I'm here tonight for you to vote yes, tonight. In the words of our past mayor, Partington, his quotes, "The goal is being to provide them with a better opportunity to be employed and also to kind of normalize their existence in society." That was our past mayor.
Thank you, John.
So he believed in this.
I'm sorry. I have time. I'm really sorry.
You know, we're here, and we can't thank you enough for this opportunity to share our passion.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
We citizens should aim to promote and empower inclusion in our community, and in the words of Tuckley Garden-
Is there a, is there a cadence next? I'm sorry.
I am different. I'm not. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Swady, and Kayden Smith is not able to be here tonight, but he asked me to read what he wrote. Is that okay?
Well, okay. Kayden, who filled out this card then?
I filled it out for-
Oh, you filled it out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can you just state your name for the record and give your address?
My name is Robert Swady, 147 Ocean Terrace.
Okay, so the same address down here? Okay.
So this is from Kayden. My name is Kayden Smith, and I have autism, A D H D, and anxiety. People with disabilities such as autism can find many jobs to be difficult. I, for one, struggle to wait. That is why I am not physically present at this meeting. But many other people with disabilities, whether physical, emotional, or otherwise, struggle in many jobs. This only adds to the feelings of exclusion these people feel. By being inclusive and providing volunteer work to young disabled people, they can feel included, helpful, and valued. These feelings are crucial, especially for younger people, and even more so if they have a disability. Volunteer work is oftentimes less committed and less difficult than a typical job, which makes it easier for people with disabilities to find a job that they can succeed in and enjoy, giving them, giving them the experiences and opportunities they would otherwise lack. Thank you for listening, and please consider what I have said.
And on deck, we have Doug Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Bond, 112 Lakeside Circle, Sanford, Florida. I come to you tonight as the proud job coach of Lance Avery, and I've had the pleasure of being a job coach now in the Volusia County for the past seven years. It has, I've been a job coach for thirteen years now in general, and I've had the pleasure of helping multiple young adults of all ages find rewarding employment in their communities. Here in the Daytona, Ormond Beach area, with Embry-Riddle University, Halifax, several employers that have offered outstanding opportunities. I had the pleasure of assisting Lance for the duration of his on-the-job training at the Nova Rec Center. The Nova Rec Center was overwhelmingly welcoming to Lance from day one, helping him to establish a very strong routine of like tasks where for the two-hour period he came into work, he knew where to start, he knew how to accomplish those tasks, and in developing this routine, he was able to independently complete his daily tasks with only mild prompts to be able to keep things moving. As his job coach, I am very confident that given a strong routine at the Nova Rec Center or any other place of employment, given the, to the work with a job coach with supported employees of his employer, Lance has all the capability that he needs to work within that routine independently and complete at just about any task that is asked of him. As part of that program, having a job coach with him, it becomes part of my responsibility to further assist him in developing those tasks. I've seen Lance be able to be able to master those skills, and I can confidently say that with any opportunity, hopefully back at the Nova Rec Center, Lance will be the outstanding employee that he's already proven himself to be. As a job coach, I very much so support volunteering in all of its forms. Furthermore, as a job coach, I even more heavily encourage employment at these, at these places. During Lance's on-the-job training, he was paid at a fair rate for the work that he was doing, furthering his status as a man in his community, not only volunteering, but earning a paycheck for his work. I implore the council, please think on this matter. Make this available to Lance and his community at large. The disabled community deserves all the opportunity in the world, just as anybody else in this community. Thank you very much for your time. Have an excellent evening.
Thank you, Chris. Doug Thomas. And on deck, we have Julia Hood.
Doug Thomas, 132 River Bluff Drive. I had a cousin who was non-verbal Down Syndrome, and I sympathize and understand your plight. I am not here to advocate for or against for this issue tonight. What I'm here is because of the tone that this has taken in our city. And if you'll notice, our country has gotten so mean and so nasty in the last few years, and in Ormond Beach, it finally set itself down here for the last year. We can fight our battles without being nasty and without being hateful. Now, I have been here since the seventies. I have served with every city manager, from Jerry Oldhouse to Joy Shanahan. And when I say serve, I mean I have been with them in their offices and meetings many, many, many times over. And I can tell you that that lady does not have one vindictive bone in her body, that she is the most fair city manager that I have ever dealt with for the last fifty-two years. So what I ask everybody is how about being nice? You can still get your point across by being nice. You don't have to degrade somebody to make your point. Now, I would ask all of you to please try and be just a little bit more kind, and good luck to you, young man. Thank you.
Julia, and on deck, we have Catherine Henry.
Good evening. I'm Julia Hood, 1609 Woodacres Court in Port Orange, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Lance. I was his chorus teacher at Seabreeze High School, and that actually, the fact that he was able to be in the chorus was something that Annie advocated for. At that point, the E S E students weren't scheduled or allowed to pick elective classes, but there were a few electives like chorus that they could come into. And so through her efforts at the school, they were able to come into the chorus class and actually sing with us and work on their verbal skills, as well as be part of a community, which is very helpful if they're, if you're isolated. You know, we're social beings. We're a community. So it was really good for the students, for Lance in particular, but also, it was amazing to me to see how beautiful it was for the other students who welcomed them in, and they were just, it was like one big family. So I think that my gen ed, regular population students, got more out of it than even the E S E students from that, from being together. So if I can advocate anything, it would be asking you to think about the benefits not only to Lance as an individual and to the, all the students as all our divergent, early divergent students, as not only to them, but what they can offer and what the community needs right now. Exactly. We need to be more loving, and we need more chances to be loving, and this is one way to do that, to make, to give us that opportunity. So I ask you to think about that and see that it could be, if it's a pilot program, maybe it's something that Ormond Beach can say, we've done really well on this, and you can help teach other communities how to do this. It could, it could work like that. Thank you very much for your time.
Catherine, and then we have Anthony Conforti.
Trying not to throw my stuff everywhere. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. I actually came tonight to talk about a totally different issue, but I only have three minutes, so I'm going to change trajectory from what I was going to talk about. I guess I'll come back to talk about the corner of Halifax and Granada because there's a big safety concern, which is why I was initially here. But I heard some very concerning things tonight, and although I understand the heart of some people, I think some points need to be made. So with that being said, I am an Ormond Beach beachside resident, but I myself have raised two special needs children. I've also served as a special education mediator, an I E P facilitator, a lawyer guardian ad litem in abuse and neglect cases, a restorative justice facilitator, and a foster care mentor. And in each of those roles, I have served disabled youth. Now, all of the exorbitant expenses identified by earlier speakers, quite frankly, are grossly inappropriate for a city to be spending its money on. Those things should be ended immediately, regardless of what other decisions are being made here tonight or in the future. But our taxes continually go up, and they must start to come back down. I'm not content with just leaving funds where they're at and just mixing it up a bit as to reallocating. In fact, my taxes on my 1949, thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home is just under four thousand dollars, which is insane. So like I said, we shouldn't just be reallocating tax funds collected, but we must begin reducing taxes to a more affordable and reasonable rate for the benefit of all of our citizens here, including every person sitting here and all of you as well. Now, with that in mind, all citizens must be treated equally under the law, and I wholeheartedly believe that. But no one, regardless of disability status, is entitled to government employment or free specialized recreation activities at taxpayer expense. So 501(c)(3) organizations, individual volunteers, private companies, they should be encouraged within our community and beyond to provide employment and exercise opportunities for our special needs residents. And I myself would strongly encourage and even be willing to volunteer with individuals that are concerned about our special needs employment and recreation opportunities, excuse me, our special employment and recreation opportunities for our special needs residents here. But, but I would just ask that we maintain fairness for all and not realize that there's entitlement for any particular class of people. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony.
Hello. Just so everybody knows, I'm pro Lance. And just wanted to dress the elephant in the room. I have a suit on this evening, so. Guys, I'm here today just to visit you one more time after a successful, unsuccessful hearing. I'd like to kindly represent Robert Rules of Procedure 6 and 6.5D. I don't believe the petition of common law satoriori is polite to the board. I believe it's a quite heavy lift. I do not think you need a mechanism that's above, beside, or around you to help you govern yourselves accordingly. I think you're a great board, and if anything, I'm just kindly requesting a rehearing at the last ordinance that I applied for, because I fear the missed opportunity of such a board like yourself, an applicant like me, to meet at such a unique time to properly usher something in, so you don't have to continue to revisit this ordinance over and over and over again, as it's just adopted by society by the day. So with that, I think you got about two minutes left, and I think we should give the rest to Lance.
All right. Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm going to call up Robert Caroline from Parks and Rec. Could you come Robert, you know, state your name and title, of course, for the record.
Yes, I'm Robert Caroline. I'm the Leisure Service Director or Parks and Rec Director for the city of Ormond Beach.
At this time, could you just kind of explain to the commission a little bit about some of the scope of services that are offered? And also, can you clarify for the record if there was, in fact, some kind of pilot program, and if the individual that was spoke about, Lance, was an employee or employed to do any kind of service work for the city?
Yeah, of course. So, and I think, I do think there are, there may be a bit of confusion per se as to how everything came about. So I think it's important that we do bring that to, to, to your attention as we move through this. But first, what I'd like to do is essentially talk about what we do offer, because what we do offer in our special populations program is much greater than the majority of the communities throughout, including even, even throughout the entire state. And so we, as a Parks and Recreation Department, are extremely proud of what we offer for our special populations. We are one of the few municipalities that actually has a Parks and Recreation Division, have their own facility, and they, they run ongoing programs every single day. So I think that's, that's important that you guys understand that. And I know, and it's good, because when I start talking about some of the programs, you'll see pictures that pop up as I go through. And a lot of the individuals that are here today have participated in those programs as well. In fact, some of our award-winning programs that we actually produced seminars on at national, at national levels for the entire N R P A, which is their national affiliation, which is National Parks and Recreation Association, we actually did some sessions there to help train people on some of the programs we do offer here in our little city of Ormond Beach. And we actually have some individuals here today that actually helped with that and was part of that. If you don't mind, you please stand or raise your hand, because it was, it was a wonderful program. Thank you very much. And the cool thing about that is that it wasn't just here in the, it wasn't here in just Orlando. It was broadcast all over the United States. Also, there was a, another program that we did. There was a total of six of them, and it was actually in New Zealand. So it's not just here in the United States. It was across the world that we actually taught these programs to sort of show what we offer in our little city of Ormond Beach. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We received multiple awards through Florida Event, Florida Festival and Event Association. We received second place in Community Outreach and Shining Stars Pageant. Our pickleball squad, three years in a row, received program initiative awards, and that was three years, twenty- was three years, '23, '24, and '25. And then we also, the cool thing about Pickleball Squad is it was also published in the Southeastern Recreational Therapy Synopsis in South Carolina. It was showcased there and it was also published in Therapeutic Recreational Journal, 2004. So let me tell you, what, what is being offered is something special. It's not just your standard roundabout special needs programs. And I think all of these individuals here can contest to that. So I, I just want to be clear, what you are doing is well above the bar in many, many, if not all municipalities throughout. So you should be applauded as a whole, as a commission, you should be applauded for that. Joyce, you as well. So by no means, please be deflated by some of the rhetoric. What you do offer is extremely important to our community. All of you can contest to that. I am, I'm very confident of that. So what I want to just do is go over and so you know what we offer. So we're going to start with Challenger Sports. So Challenger Sports is a variety of sports programs like basketball, soccer, volleyball, baseball, these sports, and sports of all sorts. We have Bike Buddies as part of that, walking clubs. They're offered throughout the year. Each program is a six-week program and it is offered one day a week. And after six weeks, we reengage, we start over, you, you sign up and you can do it for another six weeks. It's a quarterly program. We have, we average about 15 students in there. Next, we have Social Squad. Now, Social Squad is for 16 and over adults and up. And so it is, it is a program that participants graduate from, that are graduated from high school. Ah, there is a clicker. Thank you. I didn't know it was down there. Thank you very much. It is a program for participants who have graduated from high school, programs for young adults with attention, excuse me, with, it's ADD, or, or limited participants that come to hang out with their friends in a safe environment. It is also a six-week session, it's one day a week. It sort of goes hand in hand, just a different day than Social Squad. And we have approximately 25, 25 participants in that. Pickleball Squad, that's the one I was talking about, all the awards we've won as well. That is for 16 and up. It is, it start, it started as a graduate, graduation school program. The program teaches participants how to play pickleball while increasing their self, self-determination, self-esteem, and our average attendance is about 12 in that. We have a Camp T-Rex. So we do a summer camp, just like we do with the rest of the, the children within our, within our city. And this is a six-week summer camp for children from five through 18. And it is also a special populations camp. We average around 30 participants in that as well. And then we have Project Squad. So our Project Squad was sort of, and I'll call this sort of a pilot-type program, and a very simple little thing, but it was sort of a community service program, still takes place. And, and what that does is it brings the students in, a lot of it is from the same students that are in our Social Squad. And they, they do things not only for the City of Ormond Beach and some of the fancy programs that we offer, but they, as you can see, they did our employee appreciation bags. They did all the little things, put them in individual bags. They did, they did painting flower pots for Easter seals. And they also painted some shirts to put on little teddy bears that were a part of another nonprofit organization. So these are volunteer programs that these children can participate in. We call it community service programs. And then, let's see what I got next. We also partner, we have, we also do a Shining Stars Pageant. This is once a year. It's where Pageant gives opportunities for participants to shine on the stage, and we host that at our Performing Arts Center. And we usually, that's about 160 people participate, not, that's counting the parents and the whole, the whole crew. So, and then the last thing I just wanted to bring up is we partner with Spark. And Spark, with, with our partnership, puts on approximately six to seven dances a year or special events. Those special events are usually themed events. They do something for Easter, they do something for Christmas and so forth, as you can see. But there's usually six of these put on a year, and it's a very popular event, and it's also a partnership with an outside organization. So that's what, that's really what your special populations currently offer. I will tell you that we have partnered with, and forgive me, I'm trying to remember the name of your program right off the top.
Vocational Rehabilitation and Progressively Support.
Thank you, yes. And we have partnered with, with that program. And what that really established, it's a six-month, is that correct, six-month program or a six-week?
During this time, it was a three-month.
Three-month program.
Robert, did you say the vocational rehabilitation? Is that what it's called?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that program, so the, the unique thing about that, is that's through Volusia County Schools, is my correct, say that, or is it a nonprofit?
Through the Department of Education.
Okay, Department of Education. And forgive me for going back and forth, I just want to make sure I state this correctly. So what happens is we participate in providing a space to help the individuals learn special tasks that can be taken out of the, out of the City of Ormond Beach, out of the REC Center, and put to use for job placement. All right? So what that, I believe in my heart, possibly could have been construed as an opportunity to, for employment within the City of Ormond Beach, but traditionally that's not the case and it hasn't been. However, I believe that's the market that you're looking for. But I just wanted to let you know that that's somewhat how that came about. And it's not, Lance isn't the only gentleman that has, has come through that program with the City of Ormond Beach. So, and I'm not sure, I think it was, was it AJ? I think it was, and I think there was, I'm trying to remember his name, forgive me. But anyway, he, he's also currently employed in another location. So after that six-week program, or six-month or three-month program is over with, it's over. Because the, the resources aren't there to help coach, the resources aren't there to, so that either, somebody has to pick it up. And I think that's where some of the confusion was. But needless to say, I, I truly believe you guys have a lot to hang your hat on as a commission. I know our City of Ormond Beach should be very proud of what we offer, and this should by no means lessen that in any way whatsoever. I am proud what we offer our special populations, no different than I'm proud of what we offer all of the residents in the City of Ormond Beach.
So just so we got this clear, though, there is no current pilot program?
No, sir.
Okay. And what you're saying here is that we work with the Florida Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, and we offer the facilities for onsite training, but only, the site only because this is a program that's done through essentially a third party?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and the individual Vance that we're talking about, or Lance, I'm sorry, participated in that program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Robert?
I just want to make a comment. You did forget about the Special Olympics.
Oh, I did. Thank you very much.
That's huge. That was cool. When, I just, I do have one question. When Lance was participating in that pilot program, did he require supervision? I, I did read a report that you had talked about, Mr. Vaughn, from 2024, and it talked about him progressing, and he was, he still required some supervision at that time, but you were, you were pleased with the results, the way it was, he was moving forward, but he still, I think, required supervision.
Yeah. Yeah, and I honestly believe that, I mean, that's pretty common, you know, for, for children with special needs and disabilities, it's not uncommon to require ongoing support, whether it's just, you know, supervision, meaning, you know, there's all levels of supervision, but absolutely.
Commissioner Sargent?
One thing I think you forgot is the money that we lobbied last year from the state for Miracle Field.
Yes, sir.
And I think that shows our commitment to all residents in the community. And Chase Tremont was very instrumental on helping us secure those funds, Representative Chase Tremont. So I think that's something that was left out that's coming down the road.
No, seeing nothing else? All right, well, thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out. I truly appreciate it. Yes, sir. Oh, I, I can't, I'm sorry.
At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the September 17, 2025 City Commission meeting have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the state's website. Does anyone have any corrections or changes at this time? Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All is approved by saying aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Ayes have it. We're going to move on to the Community Redevelopment Agency. The following item is a community redevelopment item. The City Commission serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review this item and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the City Commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. I will now open the public hearing. And Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution Number 2025-149.
Resolution Number 2025-149, a resolution of the City Commission individually enacting as the Community Redevelopment Agency for the Central Business District and adjacent areas, authorizing the execution of an annual service agreement for Ormond Beach Main Street between the City Agency and Ormond Main Street, Inc., for the promotion of economic, physical, and aesthetic redevelopment and maintenance of the Ormond Beach Main Street District, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2025-149, read by title only.
Move approval. Okay, you don't have any cards?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just like to thank Ormond Main Street for the great work they do. Thirty years strong and looking forward to another 30 years. Thank you.
I'll echo those comments. Any other? Ms. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And this is a big increase, but I think after talking back and being on the, the board, you know, there's a lot that's going into this with developing the website and really enhancing our Main Street. And I'm proud that I have my Main Street button that Jeff Boyle gave me from I don't know when, but it's up here.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the, the list of activities that Main Street provided in that packet and all the things they do for our city is, is just amazing and without, they definitely have improved the whole quality of life in our town, so thank you.
No? I will, before I call the vote, I will say also, Becky, you know, I know this has been a long time coming, so good job and keep up going. Now you have to work harder, though. Okay, well, that said, we have a motion and a second. All is in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All those that are, don't? Okay, the ayes have it. Motion approved. I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the City Commission meeting. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the City Commissioner removes an item for the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion?
Well, I'll comment afterwards.
Okay, comment afterwards, okay. All right, no discussion. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Do any commissioners wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to comment on M, which is the efficiency audit, ourself-dojing of ourselves, which is something that, you know, was brought up during our budget process. And it's the 13-page document, and I'm very pleased that staff moved so quickly to get this workshop on the books for November so we can start doing some looking for more efficient ways of operating and keeping Tallahassee out of coming to tell us how we need to run our budget. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none. Okay, we're going to move on to report, suggestions, request. We're going to move on to Assistant City Manager Sean Finley.
City Manager.
Assistant City Manager, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of review. October 21, your regular commission meeting, for that date, it will resume on Tuesdays instead of Wednesdays this month. November 4, we'll have a workshop for the DOGE audit, as you mentioned, and then we'll have a regular commission meeting right after that. Parks and Recreation Coed Youth Basketball Registration has begun and is open to children ages eight to 14. Program registration fee is $87 for residents and $130 for non-residents. For more information, please contact Parks and Rec. My not favorite workshop they're doing is nature journaling spiders. So if you want to learn more about spiders, come to the Environmental Discovery Center on October 11 from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. Movies on the Halifax will resume Friday, October 24, and that movie will be Beetlejuice. And that's always a special event that we're so grateful for Realty Pros that does a trunk or treat during that time. So mark your calendars for Friday, October 24 at 7 p.m. There'll be a trunk or treat offered by Realty Pros, and that will begin at 6 p.m. on the Rockefeller Garn, Rockefellery Lawn, and the movie will begin at 7 p.m. Veterans Day Luncheon, November 6 at 12 p.m. at the Ormond Senior Center. Veterans tickets are free and may, and they may purchase a guest ticket for $7. Please contact Parks and Rec for that, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Sean?
Mayor, I have a question for City Manager, if I may.
Sure.
On the, the workshop that we're doing with the DOGE.
Yes.
So if, if an individual has any comments to make or suggestions on ways, on places that we think we should really look at, would you want those or do you want us to wait till you all present? What, how do you want to handle that?
Let's, let's do a presentation, we'll get guidance from you, and then we can solicit public comment, and then we'll work that up, and then that will, the plan has been to go to the Finance Committee to conduct those DOGE audits.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Joyce? No, seeing none. Assistant City Manager, Sean?
Nothing further, other than I know one of our speakers tonight wanted to speak about Halifax and Granada. If you wait around afterwards, I'll come catch you and get with you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Sean. Deputy City Attorney?
No, my thank you.
Okay. This evening, we'll begin with Commissioner Brierley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Number one, and Sean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to bring up just, if I may, the intersection of Halifax and Granada. I've gotten several phone calls on that intersection, and, and when DOT went in there and reconfigured or repaved, resurfaced the intersection there, they changed the configuration from a dual left turn and a through to two left turns and a through right. The only problem with that is there was never, DOT should have probably given some advanced notice of, of the pattern change. There's been a few near miss, side swipe issues there. The problem is you're going northbound on Halifax is that you have on-street parking for the museum. And that parking is going to start blocking the right turn and through traffic if you keep that current configuration. I almost want to suggest we go back to DOT and, and make the suggestion, we go back to the original configuration it was with the dual lefts, with the, the middle lane being the straight and the left and the right turn. I know you still have to have a split-phase intersection there as far as a signal because you need to give north and, north and southbound separate go times, if you will. So Sean, I don't know if you want to comment on that. I still have one other comment after that, Mr. Mayor, but.
I, I can, and we had the, the, earlier this evening, Brad Bocknick, who is from New Creek Engineering and is doing the CEI for that project, was here. I have a meeting scheduled with him for noon on Friday to discuss a couple of things. I specifically mentioned to him when I saw him this evening that one of the things that I wanted to talk to him was that north, that northbound section of South Halifax, as you come into Granada Boulevard, that, that it is confusing for people, it is a change. They've told me that they have some additional striping that they have added to the plan that they're, that they're going to do this thermo, that they're not, as you know, you can't do the thermo right away. But I also, I volunteered to, to Brad that we could, I would be happy to put a variable message board, sign up to, to let people know of a new traffic pattern. He, he said that he will get it taken care of, he told me he would have it here in a couple of days. I will follow up with him on that. I will follow up with him on that, but I will get with the resident, get her concern. I'll be happy to get with you, again, Commissioner, and get the full details of your concern, and I will make sure that we convey all of that to DOT on Friday.
Yeah, I would just encourage that we go back to what was originally there, because I think it worked better. But that's just my opinion.
Understood, and I'll convey that.
And thank you. And then just the other thing, as City Manager Shanahan stated, the Realty Pro night out at the Casement was changed October twenty-fourth. Yeah, we can get an email this time. I'll make sure you get an email, but they still would like us to be the judges for the costume contest, so just keep that in mind.
Are you still in the dunk tank?
I'm sorry?
Are you still in the dunk tank?
There is no, well, I don't know if there's a dunk tank, but I'm not in it, so. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say good evening. Thank you.
Oh, I think Commissioner Deaton had something to say.
I just have one request regarding the DOT meeting on Friday. I'm very hesitant to state this with my husband in the room, but Halifax and Grenada, when you turn towards elements of design, there is a raised curb that I took out yesterday. It's still there, but could we maybe look at getting rid of that one?
The, and this is the curb that's on South Halifax, not on Grenada Boulevard.
As you turn onto South Halifax, correct.
And it makes kind of, it comes to kind of a sharp...
It does one of these little numbers, yes.
A very sharp point.
Yeah.
I will, I will, we've discussed that. One of the things that we've discussed, the purpose of that island there is to protect the three parking spaces that are on Halifax, but one of the things that I discussed with them is, is there an opportunity to round, to make that a little bit more rounded and not pointed or grid? But I will, we're meeting, when we meet, I will go out there to that very location with them and discuss what some options are. You're not the first one. I've already mentioned to them, I've already been to that location with them. I'll be happy to...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brierley, you're done? Okay. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Talland?
Thank you. First and foremost, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, hence the pink blazer. So everybody that needs to get your exam, make sure you get your mammogram, it's really important. I do want to say congratulations to our manufacturing friends. They are the backbone to our economic development, and I just, I know they're gone, but I do appreciate what they do, and thank you, Brian Rodamacher, for promoting good economic development in our community. I appreciate it. I am going to address the elephant in the room, Annie. No, no vote. This is not what we're allowed, that's not in our realm. What I want to tell you is that, you know, it's not the primary role of government to directly employ individuals with special needs. I know you came here looking for a vote and you brought all your friends and, you know, it's hard on our hearts, there's no doubt about it, because every one of us up here cares, including staff, and we deeply care about inclusion and success. But it's not the role of government to provide jobs and training for individuals. It's, I think it was Catherine Henry stated it as well, and anyway, the city of Ormond Beach, as you heard from Robert, does support our special pops. And to my knowledge, Lance does participate in those programs. But our Parks and Recreation, you know, but our Parks and Recreation staff, training and education do not include developing a work-training program for adults with special needs. I believe in supporting the existing programs. I think that's very appropriate, and I think it's appropriate for us to even help you identify some additional resources if desired. I know the O J T is a great resource. You have the Easter Seals, you have, there's a Down Syndrome Organization of Central Florida that I have personally been involved with, and then there's that U C F Card Autism Organization. So there are a lot of other resources. I know it's not what you want to hear, but I'm just sharing with you. I appreciate your passion and your desire for your son's inclusiveness and his friends, and, but it's just not the job or of Parks and Recreation to provide that training. Saying that, I do welcome Lance to participate in all the things that we do offer, though, and I apologize for that. And I hate to end on a really negative note, but I did go to an opioid abatement meeting today, which, first time we had sixteen applications, and we only had two-point-five million to distribute. We did up it to two-point-six million. It's just amazing what we were able to fund. But I did want to share with you a couple stats that overdoses in Volusia County, this so far have been two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, I'm sure Chief Godfrey probably has all these numbers, sixty-seven percent was fentanyl, thirty-three percent was meth, twenty-eight percent cocaine, and that veteran, vet tranquilizer was eleven percent. All these numbers are down, two-twenty, in twenty-one, we were at four-hundred overdose, overdoses. Two-twenty-five, or two-twenty-four, we went down to two-hundred-and-twenty-nine. So all the things that the social services, the nonprofits, the Sheriff's Department, the police are doing are working. So just know that all that good money is going to good organizations and helping our community. Thanks, and good night.
Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a lot tonight. First, I'd like to let everyone know that I've been reappointed to the FAST Committee with the League of Cities, which is the Federal Action Strike Team, where you go to Washington to lobby on behalf of local municipalities. I'm also appointed to the Florida League of Cities Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. This meets several times a year in Orlando. Had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'm fortunate to have an employer and a job that allows me to take off to do these types of things for our city, to make it a better place. More to come after further meetings and when we discuss a lot more. And it's really about action through advocacy with these, just to throw that out there. The Ormond Airport, we need to figure something out as a commission on how we communicate with these flight schools. You know, we get emails daily from residents that flight schools aren't following patterns, and I do understand that once the wheels are up in the air, it's F D, or it's FAA, it's not our responsibility, but I do feel like we need to have a better dialogue with these schools. I just, I don't know what else we can do. Maybe it's weekly calls, monthly calls, I don't know, but I just think something has to get done. We're getting emails over and over and over, and nothing is changing, so clearly what we're doing isn't working. So we need to, I'm just throwing that out there, Commissioner, that something has to get changed, and I don't necessarily have the answer, but I do think it's communication with the flight schools. I do understand that it's voluntary noise abatement. I do understand that a lot of these planes are coming in on the glide path, and they're permitted to be at five-hundred feet over houses. I get it, but I think we can do better. So I'll leave that one alone for now. FDOT, I've gotten several calls, is it Cathene, Catherine? Did I miss it right? Sorry. I've gotten several calls on this as well. I actually witnessed it when I was going over the bridge the other day where two cars almost hit each other. I had a call from Marvin Miller today, spoke to Stephen, Sean, whatever, sorry, it's a long day. And he did advise that it's on his calendar for Friday to discuss with FDOT. And fortunately, FDOT, yes, they've, this project has been a headache, I think, for all residents, but it's coming together and they've been great to work with. So I thank them for that. A couple updates on FDOT. There's three new pedestrian hybrid beacons that were installed along forty. One's in front of the grind in the garage, one's down further at the police department crossing over, and one is over by Starbucks that are going to be going live soon, and it's very confusing, just to let everyone know. The, their P H B Ss remain dark until a pedestrian activates the beacon by pushing a button on a signal pole. Once activated, the P H B alerts drivers to slow down with a flashing yellow signal, followed by a solid yellow signal. The beacon turns, then turns solid red, requiring motors to stop and allow pedestrians to cross the street safely. This is where it gets pretty tricky. The beacon will then flash red, at which time drivers may proceed with caution if the roadway is clear of pedestrians. Very confusing, and I think we need to get that out. Jen, I know, I think we've talked about this before, but it is very confusing. I don't know who comes up with this, but I'm just...
A man.
I'm just reading what FDOT has provided. There's also another project, and this is going to be the Nova Road Project Improvement from the Holly Hill corridor up to U S One. They're going to be putting in the light at the Publix and the Trail Shopping Center. And this meeting, the open house, is scheduled for Wednesday, November fifth, at, from five-thirty to seven, at the Casements at Twenty-Five Riverside Drive. All are welcome to show up, look at their presentation, and provide feedback. I'm almost there. I'll end, well, I have two more things. This past week, you know, we talk a lot, as Doug Thomas said, we need more positive in this community, right? Everyone's getting beat up all the time, it seems like. On September thirtieth, there was an article in the Ormond Observer, Locals Helping Locals. Ormond's Light the Way volunteers spearheaded efforts to help cancer patients. The founder, Angela Heester, was working with a single mom, excuse me, that had stage three breast cancer. And they were looking to raise, I think, well, they raised thirty-five-hundred dollars, and Commissioner Deaton was one of, I want to read it correctly. Commissioner Deaton was one of Light the Way's volunteers who answered Heester's call for help. Within two days, Deaton, an Ormond Beach City Commissioner, had collected two-thousand dollars worth of gift cards. I just think that it's, kudos. I don't think we see enough positive up here, and I just think you need to be recognized for those efforts, for stepping in and helping, and this is what nonprofits should be doing in our community, giving back, doing different things, and this is clearly one. And I encourage anyone that wants to get involved with it, it is lightthewayvolusia.org. I just, so, good job. The last thing, I know it's not Suicide Prevention Month anymore, but I think this is something that needs to be talked about probably daily, and I think everyone needs to reach out to friends and family and just check in and see how everyone is doing. A simple call, a simple text could save a life. And I recently had someone, two weeks ago, that thankfully God gave him a second chance. So just reach out to friends and family, check on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Sargent. I was not expecting that. If anybody is interested, Light the Way is a great local community, or late, great local nonprofit. They help locals with cancer who don't have much help. I got involved back in twenty-eighteen when my little sister was diagnosed with stage two-C colon cancer, re-diagnosed in twenty-twenty-three with stage four colon cancer. She is in remission, but I got back, I got involved back then, and it's a great organization, and it's right here in our backyard. Moving on, we've had a number of people come up to the podium about their tax bills, rightfully so. Some of them, I was able to assist after. A few didn't live within city limits, but rather an unincorporated Volusia County, and they didn't realize that. One individual's tax bill increased significantly, but it was due to a substantial permitted renovation that resulted in the county reassessing her home's value to a much higher value, which resulted in a higher tax premium. One individual didn't realize that their home was reassessed in value after adding an eighty-two-thousand-dollar pool, and the newly assessed value led to a premium increase. Property taxes are a year in arrears in Florida, so if you buy a home, you inherit the seller's tax bill until the next tax bill. After a sale, your home is reassessed by the county tax assessor. If you make improvements to your home, such as renovations, installing a pool, adding additions, et cetera, to your home, your home could be susceptible to being reassessed by the county tax assessor. There is nothing the city has any control over when your home is reassessed. I think education is important, so I would like to go over a quick breakdown of how a property tax bill works. There are multiple millage rates on your tax bill. The largest part of your tax bill are from the Volusia County School Board and Volusia County itself, at about thirty-four percent each. Volusia County separates out their funds, such as the General Fund, the Public Safety Fund, Volusia Library Fund, Volusia Forever, Volusia Echo, and Mosquito Control. The city of Ormond takes about twenty-five percent of your tax bill. The remaining will account for the Ponce Inlet Port Authority Fund, Saint John's Water Management, Florida Inland Navigational District, as well as the Halifax Hospital Authority. I'm happy to answer any questions on your tax bill that I'm able to answer if you do have some. Thank you, Captain Roos, for helping with the homeless camp on forty last week. I know I have been very passionate about the transient issue and will continue to be. This is not a quick fix. It is not a crime to be homeless. It is, however, illegal to camp on park benches and sidewalks, as well as panhandle in designated intersections. We are limited on what we can do with constitutional rights. A lot of the transients that we offer assistance to, such as with the First Step Shelter, do not take the assistance. When they camp on private property, we have to work with the private property owners to get and update trespass affidavits so that the P D has permission to escort them off the property. Then they simply move to a new area. I have worked with P D personally on a number of these affidavits to help with the situation. We have had many conversations with P D for more solutions. When they camp on properties that are in the county or on properties that bleed into Daytona, we have to get other jurisdictions to cooperate. Some jurisdictions are not as cooperative as others. There is some, this is something that we are continuously working on. The city of Ormond Beach is doing everything that we are permitted to within the framework of the current laws. We will continue to work on this situation for the residents of Ormond Beach, but please let us know if you have any questions. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. I'll try to put the microphone a little closer so everybody can hear me. It looks like the group might have left here, but I just wanted to thank everybody that came out for Lance and the rest of the special needs community. It's a little, it's unfortunate sometimes that we don't have resources for these people in some instances, but we have a lot of resources here in Ormond Beach that do help the special needs community, and Robert, looks like he might have stepped out. Thank you for that update about all the things that we do in Ormond Beach, and it was really nice to see that on the board tonight on the things that we do do, because I could probably safely say a lot of cities might not offer the things that we do in Ormond Beach here. And I'm proud to say that we do a great job with that. So everybody here in Adias, staff, we do a great job with all that, with helping the special needs community. Unfortunately, there might have been some kind of misunderstanding along the way. I'm not going to get in the weeds too much about it, but I did have a chance to talk to Lance's coach, who helped him with this job training that was offered, that the city was nice enough to offer the facility, and I think he's still here, so I, you know, wish you the best of luck in trying to help Lance get placed somewhere. And I think that from our conversation yesterday, you were pretty confident that there might be some place for him. But like I said to some other people, too, is that we just don't have the resources to offer that type of program that was, might have been talked about, offered by someone else at some point. The analogy I like to use is like, is that you're not going to go to an auto repair shop to get bodywork done, right? Because they're just not equipped to do bodywork. So, you know, we're just not equipped for that, but we do a great job with helping the special needs and some of the other programs that are done through Parks and Rec, so I'm very thankful for that. Also had a chance to attend the proclamation along with Deputy Mayor Talland for the American Legion Post Two Sixty-Seven that celebrated seventy-five years. That was really remarkable to, that they celebrated seventy-five years. And over to just a couple of things over the past three years, the Legion raked close to ninety thousand dollars in remodeling and repairing the building with their own money by fundraising. They've also retired close to seven thousand flags, so that's also a nice thing as well. They've also retired close to seven thousand flags, so that's also a nice thing as well. The First Step Shelter did celebrate their thousand new beginnings last month, and that went very well, and so the shelter is continuing to have new beginnings every day, and I look forward to hearing more reports about how successful that program will continue on. And with that said, I am gonna adjourn the meeting, so thank you for everyone that's came out tonight.
Can I get a public call?
No, the meeting's adjourned.
Oh, so you're just denying my... Where's my word? To address my knives?